Okay, six o'clock, we'll officially call an meeting in order. We will dispense with the pledge of allegiance unless there's any objection, we will resign. On to approval. Somebody wanna move that?
I'll approve that. Start agenda.
Second.
I'll second consent agenda.
How about just a regular one?
Sorry. I second the approval of the agenda.
Anything discussed or something anybody were missing anything?
I hope not. I go, yeah, I'm not saying I'm not.
Oh, alright.
I hope I got it all on there for you guys.
Almost in favor?
Aye.
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 Hold business. What's our next meeting for committee meetings?
Right now that, um, the committee meetings don't actually even need to, Stephen Rose is still working on finality of plans. And preliminary architectures report for the USDA stage two documents. That's what we're banging out this week so that those can be submitted so that they can get to USDA's review panel. Prior to the preliminary authorization so that we can move forward with the bidding process. About a week or so ago, Stephen and I thought we could start putting things together for a schedule for bidding. And accepting bids and putting them out for public, including the liquor store. But knowing those stage two documents aren't quite finalized yet. Angela Blackoboye is asking us to just push it out a little bit longer to make sure all of that is done. Because if we don't have that stage two documents approved by USDA and we start moving forward, that could hurt us in the long run. So, those are still on hold. Otherwise, nothing's really changed since the last committee meeting for the liquor store. Those plans are ready to go. I'm working on the paperwork with Todd Hagan from Ellers for the task payment. Funding, the bond for the liquor store. And like I said, USDA, that's gotta wait a little bit longer until we get the construction load. Because USDA has to prove that first. We do anything prior to that, they won't give us the money afterwards. Kinda like the last construction project we did in the streets, you can't, they won't reimburse you for anything you do ahead of time. Mike has worked with Steve Rose on just a couple other fine tune things on the building. Sewer line stuff, placements.
Yep.
And.
Lift station placement essentially out there. We're gonna run into elevations where we're not able to run this sewer gravity flow as far as we need it to go. So, we're gonna end up having to put a lift station with a little bit of force main in there. Originally, the engineers had come with that going out the east side of the building. Which is actually the worst spot they could've possibly picked, of course, to put it, so we gotta move that around. So, we're working on that and a few other things with them, so. Truck no longer right way at least.
Yeah, we still have time. Just still good, I was hoping we could put together receiving bids in March approved by the April council meeting. But because of USDA documents, we're gonna probably push that back at least. Could be two weeks, it could be a little longer, it just really depends on USDA. So, my guess is, and this is just a guess, is that it would be bidding in April, waiting in May. If things are timely with Angela and her team. Questions? Concerns? Mike picked out some colors. Otherwise, kinda just waiting for plans to be done.
Soil board?
I have not seen the report yet. We got invoiced for it, but Steve is looking for it as well, I just heard from him today. You haven't seen it, right, Mike?
No, hasn't come to me.
So, I think he's gotta get with Ron and find out what happens, so it's gotta be somewhere. They've had it done for two weeks though?
I would think, I mean, they took the samples.
Like the first part of the month, they were out there, so they can't be too far behind.
Depending on what lab they're using.
Right.
Whatever, it shouldn't take that long, it's no different than our soil samples. Out at the irrigation field.
Yeah, and I didn't hear if they had to go deeper than what they originally planned, so. I might know some, we might know something more by the March meeting.
Good enough.
How far can we get pushed back before we are past the time to be able to complete this year?
You know, conversations with Steve and Gail, they still think that we can keep going. I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not an infrastructure project. So, you can get a lot of exterior work done prior to the next cold snap. And then the rest of it is interior, so exterior will go fairly quickly.
As long as that foundation can get put in, which, I mean, even if we get pushed back, they'll undoubtedly have that in by fall. I mean, well before that, but as long as that's in, from there, it won't take them long to frame it up and shell it in and then.
And then interior stuff.
The rest of the work carries through the winter, which we'd like it not to, but if it does, it does, they'll still get out here.
Awesome.
Yeah, and Steve's got timelines that he's worked with Shana and Melissa on. How the liquor store will remodel and move itself around, there'll be some things that'll be open and then closed and then. You know, break into the, into the extent, to the attachment to the new section, you know, that'll happen at a certain time. So, it's not like the liquor store will have to like shut them completely in order to do this project. It just might be like one week, the kitchen might not be open, you know? Definitely our biggest concern would be that.
So that we minimize the amount of downtime.
Right, and that's what we're doing with it.
And hopefully, hopefully this won't push us into the hunting season?
Gosh, no, I would think that. I don't really think, you know, it will affect that any. I think we will be able to, if, if above anything else, we will be able to be up and functioning in some form to get us through that.
I hope so, we hear it this year.
We do, we really do, so. The only thing that I, that I stressed to Mike and Shana both and to the board is that, you know, for the board to remember that. Although, you know, everything seems to be working great, our, our numbers seem to be able to support the two projects is. Everything's gonna hinge on what those bids come out to. You know, and if those bids still come out way higher than what the city can afford, the city still has the opportunity. You can put it off or downsize the project. Or wait and try to do it a later date to get lower bids too. So, it's not like it's, it can't get done, it's just that if the building products are still really high. And the bids get, you know, past what we want, then the city has to consider that at that time. And what I'm hoping, the reason to putting some of this off is to attract a contractor that will bid both the pond and the public works, public. Police facilities together, all those two separate projects. To get lower costs because there'll be one prime on two projects simultaneously. Which can lower labor, mobilization, everything, because they'll already be here. So, I think it's safe by just waiting to make sure we got all of our business around doing it at the same time.
Anything else on that? No?
Not here.
Jase? I was a hot water plumber. Yeah.
Yep, we'll go through that.
Was I supposed to leave this on the agenda or take it off?
It, I don't.
We didn't see anything on the last work session that said you removed it.
We're leaving it on there as a.
Constant reminder.
Constant reminder, we obviously know there's not gonna be a darn thing done with it now until.
Right.
Spring, summer, but this way it doesn't get forgotten.
We're still just a, the, the little bit of an update that I have that really isn't even an update. The same as last time, we're still trying to work on where exactly to put it.
Cause the original plan just.
Yeah, well, it's not gonna work, because we don't know all the things from there, so.
Since we're talking about the wayside breast, is there any timeframe on when the pond's gonna fix the charge station?
As I know of, I notified them quite some time ago, I can do it again though.
But.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
It's been down for quite a while.
Right, and it keeps getting broke quite a bit.
Well. You know.
I don't, I, I'm right there with you, it's just that we can't.
It, it's a nice concept, I guess, if you wanna call it that. I personally, since I've been here, I've never once seen it used, so. I don't know if you guys have or not.
Cause we don't pay for that.
No, no, we have, we have no control on anything.
Not ours, we pay nothing for.
Just the space.
Just the space?
Yeah, they pay the electricity, they pay for.
Their machine, their.
Machine, any repairs.
Yep, trying to figure out if it's even worth us even having it at the time. Versus the constant headache of us having to call.
Constantly keeping up on them to keep it fixed.
Right, they don't, you know, obviously they don't have anyone that goes around and checks on them, they rely solely on us or people to let them know.
You know, this might be speculation too, Jason is also considering that there could be a supply chain issue with the parts.
Oh, no, I, I, that's totally fine, I just, I just don't want it to be an eyesore for the city.
Especially if it's not functioning.
Exactly.
I'll get ahold of them again though, Jason, I appreciate it, I'll see what's going on.
Are you calling Sam?
I don't remember who I talked to, I played phone tag last time, or phone chain, whatever you wanna call it. Wait, I'll transfer, wait, I'll transfer, and finally talk to someone. So.
I'll.
Maybe that's a possibility, maybe I didn't get to the right person.
I'll get you to the right person.
Is it possible, like, talking to them about building a little structure over it, make it not an eyesore?
I don't think it's so much an eyesore that it's there, I think what Jason's meaning is the fact that it's broken all the time.
Oh, yeah.
And you know, if we put some sort of structure over it, then you run into, you can't get the charge cables out.
Can't get.
It's just one of those deals that people just have to vandalize things for whatever reason, I don't know.
Should've, would've, could've.
Is there any way we can convince Bell Tram to put one of them cameras, not cameras, up there with the. What I'm looking for, solar panel? So, it's recording something so people think it is, so they quit vandalizing it as much?
I suppose that would probably be up to them, being it's their property. Might be something that we can talk to them on both.
Three now?
This is number two since I have been here, I think. I don't know how long it was up before I came, but.
No, okay, so.
Hasn't been very long, I think they proved it in eighteen.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be a cycle, if they're gonna hit that, then what happens if they hit our hot water station? For that, or go and vandalize our pressure?
That happens every year, I'll have to get my datebook out, I can tell you about the day the restrooms get hit every year. I think there's somebody that takes vacation here or something, because it's same drawing, same words, same everything every year.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep. Local sales tax.
Uh, I currently don't have any updates for you today.
But we're not behind.
No. Not this time. Thank you very much, making that point, Max.
Okay. What do you need us to do with the polling place?
Uh, just notification, um, the absentee balloting can start this Friday. I will be going to. The administrative office, the county, tomorrow afternoon to pick up the auto mark and the absentee ballot information. So, if anybody wants to place their ballot in as absentee, they can start, so this Friday until the twelfth of April. So, there'll be some information on our website, if people have to apply, they're not registered, that information will be there too.
Does anybody have anyone that they know of that wants to be written in?
Haven't heard anybody.
He's booked at Don Johnson. He told me, you talked to him?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Okay.
Someone would share it. Sure he was on board last time I talked to him.
Maybe before the November election?
Just like two weeks ago, we could go.
Um, I'll have a resolution in the March packet to approve the special election judges. I only need three people, because it'll be probably a fairly low turnout election. So, I'm only gonna use, although we all approve. My, my slot of election judges, I only need to grab one more person to help Paige and I. And will, Paige and I will be the board, the absentee board approving the ballots that come in. And the county will give us their locked boxes to put those ballots in here, the city hall when they, when they come in. The last thing I wanted to share, Max, is that I did get some feedback from the city attorney. The last time the board met, they asked what happens if we don't fill it on the thirteenth.
Yep.
Um, Joe stated, hopefully that doesn't happen. But if it does, the city's back to where they are right now. The seat is to be filled. If we're still at a point where a special election is required, then you queue it up for the next special election. Although a lot of work, the city really doesn't have a choice, the seat is not supposed to simply remain empty. He stated ideally, the council should work to actively recruit people to run their offices, doesn't include. So, just try to make people for teams that, and.
Do it over and over.
Right.
For another, for a year.
Two, well, year and what, four months, eight months?
Before you actually just point someone with a letter of consent.
Right.
I know we didn't have this issue last time, but if Daffy Duck wins, even though it's a fictitious character, do we still count that as the people's choice? Or can we eliminate that and go to the actual people?
Wow.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, I guess I'm going to answer the way we, we went off when we did the, um, the canvassing of the last election is that, yes, that's people's choice.
That's what I was afraid of, okay.
Yep, so, don't waste your vote.
It's not really a wasted vote to people if they vote, but I understand.
Yep, make it a living, breathing person.
Yeah, because I talked to a lady that, she was an HR lady at Anderson's. She was wanting to be on council and she walked out over there because of difficulty with the new president.
Is she a resident of the city?
Yeah.
Right?
But. She pretty much washed herself in that whole thing. I know.
Yeah, it stinks that we're past, uh, putting the names in on ballots, all write-ins.
Oh, the filing?
Yep.
Yeah, filing dates done, it's all right there, so.
That's gonna be the hard part.
If you, yep, they make sure they want it. Alright, on to the real fun stuff here. Our demolition application.
So, when we met in first part of February, I didn't have the full application to provide for the council to look at. But I did have the estimate in my head, I remember stating that at the end of my administrator's report. So, I supplied that to the board for review in your work session packet additionally with the estimate as well. The development corps has met since the council meeting on February eighth. And they're going to actively look for interested parties that might wanna develop the property. Even though we're not even at that stage yet, they're gonna start talking to seeing if they can find or have someone that is inside or outside. The area that might be interested in taking that property over. They're also going to look at, you know, talking with, um, I think it was Carl Bildmeier, they've given their original bid. And that was just for forty and forty-eight main. While talking to a couple other contractors in the area that are interested or would still be interested in taking over that demo project to try to keep some of that business local. Otherwise, that's, that's on hold until we hear back from the state. The other element to the process is the securing clear title to thirty-two Main Street. The development corps is still working with title, with Saff Retile to ensure that that is clean. Did we have any questions about that process?
Not here. No, I read the application, like I said, I talked to you earlier, I said it looks really good.
Yeah, I thought you had some great job.
I like how it's under what we were anticipating.
Right.
Right.
You know, with the, yeah, from what I saw, I was like, say no?
Yeah.
Well, let's hope that it was written just for, for the city.
It definitely looks like it's ours.
Oh, it'd be great.
So, do we still have the purchase agreement? For the same price then, even though that title's not transferred?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, our purchase agreements are all signed.
Yep.
So, we're, we're ready to go, but it's the clean title.
It's a clean title that needs to be secured.
And right now, there's a little hiccup in that.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, is how long will that purchase agreement hold?
It's a good question.
Uh, there's dates in there, I think those will be in April.
Got you, that other one was at sixty days?
Yeah, and it's already been in the process now for the last three weeks, so, actually before that. Because Grant Frenzel, the treasurer of the development corps, started working on sending the documentation that I received from Dan Olson and Perry Shack. Prior to the submission of the documents, or the submission of the, um, the grant application. On February one to Saff Retile to start that process rolling, so it's been in the works now for three, if not four years. So, but it's, you know, it's. It's a unique situation, so it's not gonna be an easy sell, an easy PA to finalize. But hopefully, development corps is on it and, um, once that's secured and cleaned, then it'll be an easy thing for the city to get out.
Yeah, we should be able to step right into it once they get.
Right, once they get.
Once they take care of the dirty work.
Yep. Yep.
On that note. On our buildings.
On your petition?
No, on the, I'm not.
Three buildings?
The three buildings.
Oh, sorry.
What is inside of them currently?
So, forty and forty-eight main are basically vacant of. Anything of any value. I've been downstairs, there's some old chairs and trails in. I have not physically been in thirty-two main, but it's my understanding that Dan Olson has a lathe. And a couple other things of equipment for his woodworking that he requested to be able to get out when the time comes. I still, I have possession of the key and he knows that that's not gonna, you know, that we're not keeping that, anything like that, equipment. He moved that stuff in, so it was never there when he bought it, or, excuse me, when he took possession of it from Perry Shack. I'd use some correct terminology here, so.
So, there's no restaurant fixtures in there?
Nothing of any value. There's a lot of old chairs and a few tables.
Stainless steel, NSF stuff that maybe the pond can, we can spray off at a car wash.
No shell, any.
So, with all due respect.
Table.
I do believe any of the equipment you are referring to that is in there would need severe upgrades prior to being passed to MDH. I believe it's older enough where it probably wouldn't pass, not to mention its current state.
Good.
I would, I would think a car wash wouldn't be good enough.
Yeah.
With all demolition.
Well, there's a, there's a griddle in there, Sheldon. But it's in part of an oven, but it's in very poor condition. The walking cooler is gone, the refrigeration portions are gone, the water, um, hot water heaters are gone. There really is nothing of use.
Ninety-five percent of the buildings are demolition.
Yes.
All the good stuff got stripped out.
Yeah, yeah, city's, city's not gaining anything except.
No, I just thought, maybe there's a, maybe there's a little bit of a silver lining in that. But, no.
No, I would.
Alright. We won't ask about it anymore?
I wouldn't want down there. I don't know, I mean, no. I mean, and that, that's just, that's just my personal experience from passing the hungry duck. Having the hungry duck being purchased from the duck and eat and knowing what the current owners had to do since some of the existing equipment. When they bought it from the city, that it needed some upgrades to pass their department of health and get to their level. And that place was only closed not even a year and a half. And the equipment that was in there was purchased used, but it was fairly new. So, just, just knowing that, I would, I would feel very comfortable stating that the, what's left in the trails in is not useful. Yeah, we got our inspection up. Yeah. Sandra will be coming to visit us, always gives us a heads up. Not always, this time, this time she did, last time she just showed up.
And our demolition expert, everybody, check that out.
Mm-hmm.
There's your totals. On to Joseph Wahomee's property, unless you had something else?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Sorry.
Since we can't have a split vote, a tie vote. We're gonna get to do this again.
The next council meeting.
At the next meeting.
Basically because the, the vote tie, it dies, so there's really no official position right now. You're not for nor against it, because there was no majority.
Really pretty literally how we all, how I feel about it.
Right. I did sit in with the city attorney and spoke with him and Max sat in at the same time, just to hear some of his feedback. You know, he doesn't have any official position on it, but what I did take away from him is that it. It's not the best case for the city to win. Um, because the only thing that we have in the statute to support it is. That it would cut away from the municipal boundary, which isn't the strongest case.
Because we've already got.
Other, other cookie cutter things going on.
Boundaries.
Right.
So, if everybody still feels the same way they did when we voted last. What's your case to flip somebody to get to go the other way?
Is there questions that you have that you need to discuss, but, or not?
Is a judge gonna side with them splitting up the lake?
They don't own the lake.
But there's other property that still would be in our. That would be my only thing. That would be my only thing.
I would probably bet that there's township since, there's township and city all the way around Lake Bemidji. If you think about it, the city of Bemidji's municipal boundary doesn't go all the way around Lake Bemidji. That's township too, so I don't think that that's a case that you could argue.
Ten times the size of.
Doesn't matter.
It'd be like a watershed.
It's a good question, Nick, but I bet you it's a stretch.
Probably.
Yeah.
Like, with me, I, I feel that he's not here to represent what he's going after, what he's asking for. You know, to re- represent what he's asking for. And there's still the thought of other people below him or above him wanting to do the same back.
Yeah, because if we're gonna say, let him go, we might as well let everybody else go that wants to.
But give him a free pass.
I'd like to get my section on there too.
What township would you like?
Make my own this tax, tax free.
Alright, well, Jason?
Uh, uh, as much as I don't wanna look at it, I'm trying not to look at it as a double edged sword. I mean, if we deny him to li- to leave our municipality zone, what's to stop him from taking a potential money, or not a money maker, but a potential pain business away from Black Duck? I mean, if we allow him to annex out of Black Duck's zone, least he'll, he will be supporting us, not in tax revenue, but in firefighting revenue, from a different township. There's that aspect, also for him having the rest, or the, um.
Gift store?
Gift store, thank you, I was going for N T's.
And two rentals.
And two rentals, oh, I didn't know that.
Well, they own the one in Liberty, the house in Liberty, and when they moved into their house, I think they're either gonna sell it or they're gonna rent it, one of the two, sorry, I need more.
Okay, so I mean, that's, um, again, that's money back into the city through pro- us, through the business, for them paying taxes on that.
Want to say, a year down the road, he doesn't have interest in that anymore, and he sells it anyway, his in-town stuff.
Uh, I.
I got my life, I'm retired, I don't need this stuff anymore.
I mean, that's the only thing I, that I could think of, I mean, I don't see him as a spiteful man, but, um.
Yeah, I never, I didn't even do that either.
Oh.
You give up one plot of finances for another plot of game resources. So where do you think the outcome, which one's higher base? You know, which one's gonna bring in the tax and sale, and which one's not?
I get where Nick's coming from, you wanna maybe send a message? Definitely nobody else does. You know, or it's gonna be a fight? Being uncomfortable.
Yeah, I'm, and then with the, uh, with the conversation that Christine and Max had with our lawyer, he pretty much said it would be a losing battle, so. Cause he's got everything else on his side except for our irregularity.
Then you gotta stop, think, or is it gonna stop?
Yeah.
First, don't put, put his foot down, and make. It's just gonna.
Keep going up?
Right.
I, I'm right there with you, Sheldon, I really am, but I'm, I'm hoping that it's not gonna happen. I mean, because, uh, we need to expand, I mean.
Right.
Am I getting rid of stuff that's the complete opposite of expanding?
But again, that's agricultural, it's not anything with residential or business or industrial, it's all ag land.
And unless the city had a, you know, a plan in place for that ag land, you know, five years, ten years, twenty years down the line, of what it could be, what it's supposed to become, it doesn't have another, you know, coin in its pocket for the statute. The property's been inside the municipal boundary of the city for more than sixty years. We're trying to figure out the stomach addition's been there for.
At least so.
At least that, so, and nothing else has changed to it over those many decades. So we can't, as a city, state that it had a plan for that property as the statute requires. So we don't really have an argument on that state.
So for the last sixty years, it's sealed it and bring finances into the city of Black Duck?
No, that's not my point.
As far as agricultural concerns and.
That's not my point, my point is that it had no preliminary plan to change into something more and make the city larger in terms of a, a residential zone or another commercial zone. When you have, when you look at the statute itself, it says, does the property have any, is it part of a, a municipal plan in place? Like, is it gonna become an industrial zone or a business zone or another residential zone? And what does that gonna look like? Have we created some type of plan in place? Have we taken forty acres and divided it and made a subplot into it to separate it out and sell it? Did we have a plan for that acreage is what I'm trying to say. The city have no official plan for that, any of that property.
So get rid of all the green?
Or any of it, for that matter. That's why planning and zoning is so important, if you have, you know, forty to about eighty acres and somebody wants to subdivide it and attach it to another residential area, that's, that's how that grows. You have those plans in place to either continue to annex it in or to create something else, much like Walden did up in Quiet Meadows. That's an ideal forty that's been subplotted off to become a neighborhood, if you will, whereas everything in the ag has the, has, is remained that way for decades. So it really has, Joe has no arg- we have no argument against Joe for that particular point of the statute is, is the topic I'm trying to focus on.
And it's not like the property's changing hands.
No.
It's been the same folks.
It's just leaving our taxes.
And there's no, like Christina was saying, there's no plans for us bringing in water and sewer lines or power lines or anything like that.
To improve it up and make it something different. I mean, granted, that's only one of the reasons in the statute that you can fight against, but, um, this property has a better argument on Joe's, on the property owner's side to remove himself than, let's say, Rich Marine or Doldmires, which are smack dab in the middle of that egg area because of the scenic. You know, you're not gonna remove, you know, that six to eight acres right on the southeast, southbound side of Stoner.
You know, people are, you know, we're still supplying city services to, you know, you're still plowing, you're still.
Where does the city pile in the scenic?
Well, the beachy road we don't even touch, you guys, but the.
So basically, everybody from the scenic that way could go if they wanted to then.
Well, we've gotta stand in agreement, gentleman's agreement with the county when it comes to plowing out there, so I mean, technically, we're still taking care of it.
Right, and Summit contracts the county anyway, so there's really, there's really no stand as to who does it or who doesn't. I mean, that's kinda picking it apart when it comes to just applying service. You know, being part of the city is not just.
What service do you provide?
Jason, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I had a couple of things I just wanted to say quick, but I think, uh, Max and Christina's talk with the attorney should really be thought of. If you dig your heels in on something that the attorney thinks you're gonna lose, then you might have a domino effect of people like, let's try it too. And they don't understand that they're in a different spot, like Christina was saying about the Marines, that they're in the middle. A judge, most likely, I, I mean, I'm not a judge, but that's a different circumstance than this individual that.
Yeah, but if that corner goes out, what's to say that corner or that corner, then?
I understand what you're saying, but right now, there's a road that we're not touching, comes in on township, and it turns into city, okay? All the other properties that I know of on there are coming in on city, okay, but it's not partial loaded or anything like that. But you're, you're saying like, is anybody gonna switch decisions, and I think what you really need to do is, what's in the best interest of the city, really? If your, if your attorney is saying you're gonna lose most likely in their opinion, if you take it to court, that could be opening up a lot worse issue, because now people that don't understand this might try to get out, and if they take it to court, the city's paying, what was it, two grand every time or six grand or whatever?
Six thousand.
Six thousand, so three grand. So you might open up where people are like, well, he did it, like, we can do it too. And your attorney might say, well, yeah, we can win this one. Well, if it costs us six grand when everybody does it, is that really win then? So, I don't know, that's kinda what I was thinking.
No, just like Jay said, it's a double edged sword, which way first it's gonna go on everything, because.
But if you dig your heels in on the attorney thinks you're gonna win, and you win, it's gonna stop that domino effect.
Right.
You dig your heels in when they, our attorney thinks we're gonna lose, and then we lose, people are gonna think, well, I can do it too then, let's take them to court. And you're gonna have five, six, seven, however many people are in there, trying to get out, and you have to go to court and pay the six grand, even though you're gonna win.
While Joe Lango didn't say, you know, you're gonna lose, or I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, why are we hearing from this? Why do we have to hear it from a second or third party?
He had a con- he had a conflict, he has another council meeting tonight, so he couldn't be on this call.
I would like to hear.
From him?
Like, is he just hearing his side of it?
Is he hearing the owner's side of it?
Yeah.
No, he hasn't spoken to the owner, our city attorney doesn't speak to, practically.
He just speaks to you?
And the council, yeah. If you wish to speak to him, I can put you in touch with him. And just as a heads up, the main reason I got in touch with him was because you split the vote. And I needed enough time to receive.
I thought you, before we even split the vote, you said you, you already just said no to it. You already said we would lose before we even voted on it.
Before the February meeting, you mean?
Yes, you mentioned something that it was gonna be, we're for sure gonna lose before we even had a vote on this.
No, well, he wasn't gonna be, he wasn't going to take favor with going forward with contesting it. That was his opinion then, and then when we split the vote, that's when Christina had to get a hold of him and find out what we have to do next. Because we technically have no official position. And if we have no official position, well, then he's going to proceed with this either way.
So what happens, our next meeting is a split vote too?
So.
So how long?
Eventually, he's just.
It's just gonna end up going to court anyway?
It'll go to, it'll be, it'll have to be decided by a judge.
Okay, so just a, let me reverb here for a second, Nick, if I could give you a timeline. Joe Wohomi has not filed this with the state as of yet, and the reason for that is because he hasn't met with Summit Township yet. Summit Township doesn't meet till the first part of March. They haven't officially voted their board, one way or the other, if they wanted to come in. All he's had when he was here at the January work session was feedback from one board member, and that was it. So until that board makes an official point, and this board has an official point, which it doesn't yet, because the vote, this, the vote was split, it's not gonna get turned into the state. Once something gets turned into the state, that's when that, um, legal action starts working. So if, if the city has no problem letting him go, letting the parcel out, the township doesn't need to even vote. But if the city has something against them in leaving, and the township, of course, is fine having them, then there is an issue. If it was the other way around, and we were trying to annex them in, and Summit didn't wanna let them go, then we'd be the opposite of what we're in right now. It's just having a split vote means the city has no position at this point. And since there's nothing been filed with the state at this point, we're, it's like it hasn't even started. So to my previous point, I wish to ask the city attorney some more, just to get some feedback, I absolutely can put you in touch with Joe. Cause I'm obviously missing some questions that you have that I didn't know, that I could ask him for you.
Good. So it'll be on the agenda until March?
It will be on the agenda again in March. If this board wishes to continue trying to vote on it, which it should, otherwise, I should probably look at my calendar. I think the township's need the second Tuesday in March, which is the ninth, which would be the day after our council meeting. So if this council wants to leave it up to the townships, the township to decide and not have any action on it, it's obviously gonna go into, you know.
Yeah, they're deserting.
Then it's gonna go into arbitration.
They'll definitely vote for it.
Cause they'll vote for it.
Yeah, who wouldn't get more taxes?
Right. Jason has a very good valid point, though, Summit is part of a fire protection contract. That tax capacity of their property would end up in Summit's, which would increase their market value of buildings, which it hasn't affected them yet, which means the calculation for the fire protection contract, Summit would pay Black Duck more. I'm not saying it's exactly what the city would get in tax base, but it would still be something, so.
It's, yeah.
You know, but then on the flip side, we're gonna lose that, so it, it might balance, just kinda depends on what the market value of structures is.
And I mean, if we go in and we win, we still end up paying.
And right now, the only thing that.
Yeah, it'll take a few years to recoup that with his prop- with that tax base anyway. And if you, I don't know. There's property that's sitting here in city limits right now, in town, that could be improved upon. That, that's me, that's, you know, it's obviously is owned and the taxes are getting paid on it, but it's definitely, it hasn't done anything in over thirty, forty years for some of them.
Maybe that'll be another conversation later as on who and what property we could annex and, and how to go about that to raise our value in our city.
I have a couple ideas.
Later.
We wanna get this figured out first.
I think everybody's got a few ideas, but.
I just arrived one.
Uh, after hearing what Joe had to say on that, it, it just doesn't seem like it. And what Jason was saying too about, he's also, you know, something to be said for, i- if that's what you really want, you know, and be able to hunt out your act or, I guess, since legally you can't fire.
City limit deal.
In city limits, and he's right on the edge, I, I can see his point, you know, and, or for one government.
Well, you live off on Liberty.
Yeah, you know.
You're bordering the north side of the, of the city, I'm sure savages and them that have property in the north, you are hunting up there. All that armland.
Yep.
Yeah, you guys hear gunshots during rifle season all the time, I'm sure people are hunting up there, and you're within.
Probably have all the muzzle load up there.
Yeah, a few acres away.
What's the?
I guess I do.
What kind of, can you muzzle order?
Well, you'd do all the rifle on.
Rifle on it too?
Yeah, if you're not the city limits, five hundred. Yeah, if you're not the city limits, five hundred, I think it's five hundred feet from an occupied.
Occupied, yes.
If you have permission, you're good.
Then you're good.
Yep.
So I mean, yes. Probably got a little something to do with it, but so for what you were saying, but what Jason was saying, you know, he's a member of the community as he stated.
He won't be when we annex the north.
Well, he'll be a member of the community.
He'll be involved in the community.
Yep. The uh.
City. City.
Yep, the whole point is, you know, they have a business in town. He's on the fire department. Perhaps one day you'll see Little League t-shirts with Tom North Goods on the back. You know, sponsoring the teams, that kind of stuff. I don't, I don't claim to know, but there's something also for nobody, not everybody's gonna be happy with this. It doesn't matter that way or not, but I I just don't see throwing more time and money after it.
I also like the fact that he gave us enough respect to come in here and talk to us before he even filed. I mean, that says a lot to his character.
Yeah, technically, he hasn't filed yet.
Yeah.
So yes, we will put it to another vote when.
On March.
March eighth.
Okay.
Everybody can that time and moment over and Nick? I wouldn't get a hold of the attorney.
Just remind me, what what's the gentleman's name again?
Joe Lango.
Joe.
It's written on there.
Yeah, it is?
Yeah, I think I have it on there.
Me too.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Open up, get out.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I'll do another petition for us to vacate.
Oh, is this uncomplete?
Is there any other, you got any more old business?
No.
Okay.
We got no other old business. There's no point, everybody. Hashed out, it's gonna be what it's gonna be on March eighth.
Good points.
Okay. All right. Um, in your packets, in your new business is a petition for vacation of the remaining portion of Universal Drive Southwest. So I also provided for you a certificate of survey from Matt Murray.
That does look a little better, doesn't it?
Yeah, so this is the original preliminary plat. Now, what that means is it was never really finalized, okay? So keep that in mind, although that's what it looks like on the zone map, right?
Right.
Um, as you spoke with, and I'm representing Matt right now, cause his girls are at a basketball game, but as he stated previously, he wanted to vacate everything of Orion, Universal Drive, back from Orion, and then all of Milky Way. Well, when he went back to Matt Murray, because Matt's going to realign these parcels, he realized that he needed to vacate this portion of Universal Drive as well. In the certificate of survey, you're gonna see that what he's gonna do is he's gonna redraw the lines around Redneckies and where the stump jumpers are purchasing the property for the public parking lot and sell those two parcels out to those two entities.
If I could ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
Parcel C would be the stump jumper and Parcel B would be Redneckies?
Redneckies, correct.
Okay. So everything else is gonna be pretty much man locked to either not get in there?
Correct, because it's still gonna retain ownership by Matt Sparby.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
And then he s- he said there was gonna be another easement?
Yep.
For him to be able to go where where's?
That's the gray, that's the little bit of the gray here.
Okay.
Um, which is part of Universal Drive right now. So what he plans to do is when he changes ownership of where Redneckie Tractor Ranch is now, he's also going to give or sell a section back here where Universal Drive is and these two parcels as well to part Redneckies, so that Redneckie can build a future uh, structure to sell his seed corn out of.
I'm sorry, you said two structures, then are the ones in the?
So there's one, there's a structure on this property.
Okay.
That's where the tractor ranch is now.
Okay.
And there's that little garage on this one, that's where the stump jumpers are.
Okay, so where he's got blocked off for Parcel B?
Mm-hmm.
The easement is gonna allow him to get onto his property?
Yep.
So he's not gonna be able to use Universal Drive anymore?
No, it won't exist.
So he's just, he's he's gonna literally drive all the way around Redneckie's property?
He won't even, if he even does that. If he chooses to, let's say one of his daughters gets one of these pieces of property in the future, then he'll have this easement and he can create his own road behind it to access it.
All right, I I'm I'm just trying to say future arguments here.
Sure.
So, okay, so, okay, so he's not planning on driving at all on Redneckie's property?
No.
Okay.
No. Um, okay, so where it left off was that Redneckie would retain all of Parcel B and the stump jumpers would retain all of Parcel C and then there would be an easement. So what Matt is requesting, and he spoke to the planning commission last Wednesday, the planning commission had no problem with what he's proposing and moved to recommend the council approve the petition and call another public hearing to vacate the remaining section of Universal Drive. All that's left that wasn't approved at the last resolution from the right away, amend that right away in.
We actually have to have another, we have to put a notice in public here and you can't just amend?
No, you have to start over. And Matt understands that and I told him that and he thought I could amend it and I said, no, you can't. So he will be charged for the additional administration time that I'm taking to do this all over again. He knows it's on him. He apologized. I've already invoiced him once, so that's behind me. Um, and I did talk to our city attorney just to make sure that it could not be amended, because I wanted to make sure I was doing that right, because Matt wants to make sure it's right too. Um, so what the city would be um, calling the public hearing on is to vacate this gray area here.
Okay, so then he'd still own?
All of the rest of the property.
Yeah, even that, well, what's that say, exception?
Parcel, this is now Parcel A. That's all here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so there's A, B, and C.
Okay. But he was going to be selling a little chunk to is that included in Parcel B now?
What little chunk?
That little chunk you said he was gonna sell to Rednecky.
No, it's, no, it's not. No, it's not. Parcel B right now or the existing parcel Redneckie is on is this whole thing here. Right now.
So it's shrinking.
It's shrinking, but it's also changing. It's coming back like this. So it's going over what is this parcel and this parcel and the road.
So he's pretty much taken away the um, the farmland that Redneckie is currently using? Is that how understanding the Parcel B?
Um, none of this has been developed now, so I think it's still farmed. I can't remember if there's trees back there or not, Jason.
Okay.
Yeah, and he already and Cory already kind of manages this for him.
Okay.
So Rednecky, he's gonna end up with the roads, Milky Way and Universal then? To extend his land then?
Well, the roads won't exist because you already vacated them, but yes.
He'll end up with them to?
Yeah, it'll 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 go over. I mean, as you see, this preliminary plat now won't look like that when it's all done. All the property lines will be redrawn.
And the roads will disappear.
And the roads will disappear. I got everybody on the same page?
Yep.
Okay.
That's why I was wondering about with that plat book when we first got into this.
If anything else is gonna be different? You know, and and Matt apologizes, because I sent all the legal documents to the county, got it back, sent it to Matt Murray for him, so Matt could start drawing the property lines up. And Matt's like, so the road stops here or here? And I said, it stops at the other side of um Orion and he's like and two minute, two hours later, I got a phone call from Matt Sparby and he's like, I thought we did the whole thing. And I'm like, no, that's why I wanted you to draw up this paperwork, not me. So I have had consultation through um Sparby and Murray on how to clearly draw up a new draft of a petition to declare sufficiency for the petition. The petition is not stated accurately, but this is the way Sparby delivered it to me originally. After speaking with Murray, this document, the way I have it have the language now, will represent the certificate of survey. So basically, everything else of the Universal Drive will be vacated that has not been vacated already. And it is only up to the right away, so there's no conflicts with the state um, highway either.
Matt has no further plans for that area, does he?
Murray? Oh, Sparby.
Sparby at this time?
Not at this time. Um, not any different than what he stated when he first came to the work session back in December and said, you know, if I give a parcel of land to my daughter and they wanna build when they get older, great, or do whatever.
And this is all classified as uh, bloodline? Not what, what?
Farm.
Uh, partland. No, the way it's currently zoned because of the way the preliminary plat was done, is that these two parcels are a business and everything surrounding is residential. So everything around it will still remain residential unless he petitions to have it rezoned.
Okay, and then Spar, um, Redneckie's uh, business can still reside within the residential zoning?
Yes, because it's a highway business.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so later on down the road, there's gonna be no complaints about access to part land behind it, right?
I don't see how there would be because even behind that ex- that existing new Parcel A is hindsight township. So.
To where, to where it will coincide with the Black Duck, you know, township or city limits.
Not that I can think of. What are you thinking?
I will leave that out.
Okay.
Because I think it's gonna end up in the future, come back in us.
Meaning?
To where there will be probably some kind of a conflict with like, with their kids wanting access?
Well, if he already, if he remains, keeps the easement, if he retains easements, then there shouldn't be.
Not unless they wanna build a road through all that other stuff that's back there, that's on them. Did Matt Sparby's go to uh, the planning commission on the first contract?
They did not, and I spoke with Benson and Klug about that at the beginning of the planning commission, because even Benson said kinda did the cart behind the horse. And I said, yep, you're absolutely right, but that's a preliminary plat and those roads have never been developed, so it really was kind of a no brainer to just jump to the council because you know, the planning commission's gonna be like, well, there's nothing there anyway, so could they have heard it in November? Sure they could have, but when Sparby first brought all this to the council, it was after what the planning commission's November meeting would have been and they hadn't had since the thirteenth, so to keep the ball rolling for Sparby, I just jumped that egg over. The planning commission had no, no problem with the second one. They understood why it was jumped over the first time. Um, Benson even said, again, it's a preliminary plat, so or are they to say no?
Makes sense, thank you.
Right. Yep, and they didn't have problems with that. So if the board is okay, I'll.
Throw it on there.
Okay, I, then that's what I told Sparby, I tried to do the public hearing at the same time as the council meeting in March eighth.
Yes, we will open and close and.
Right.
Yeah, I've got no objections. I'm going with the planning commission's approval.
That's gonna be at our?
March eighth?
No.
So it's the the first thing, no, it'll be later because it'll be April, because the first thing the council has to do is to prove the resolu- approve the resolution declaring, saying, declaring the sufficiency of the petition and calling a public hearing. So technically, the public hearing won't be until April.
And then that's the news, the newspaper letting them know?
Yes.
So Matt Sparby will be on the, up and for that additional piece as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. Longer process than.
Yeah, keep forgetting about that stuff.
It'd be great to do it when it's done, but you can't like, do the resolution, have a public hearing, then do the resolution. Cause there's no notice in between.
Okay, we're good with that? Good with that?
I think I got everything on here, guys.
All right. Sale of the public works truck. That's Christina.
I had documents, I had page thirty wrapped up. Um, we just want permission to put it up for public bids. I can get it done by mid-March.
Okay.
Minimum bid, five hundred bucks.
We'll do it, prove.
Which we'll think of.
So I'll try to get it in the paper so we can start accepting bids by the first part of March and leave it out there for a week and a half and maybe open mid-March and order to the highest bidder.
And we're gonna put on their um, mustn't even serve? Because I know we were talking about a reserve.
Yeah, it's the minimum bid.
That's the minimum bid.
Oh, okay.
I wouldn't say what it is. We got a lot of money for those to be able to line with all the minimum, making the minimal.
We sent that on yours.
Yeah, I put a minimal on.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we.
Yes, we did.
I said not to, but okay.
What's the word minimally? Barf could go? No, don't, don't say anything.
See, don't make me say that, no.
Now, the two thousand five, that one's the one that Chris and them were running around with?
Not anymore. But worth.
Worth, okay.
Yep.
It's an old four.
Like five hundred would be reasonable.
That's on our insurance as an old five, so let's look at the title and see who's right.
Well, I want, let's make sure we're bidding on the same truck.
I'll check the title tomorrow, okay? Okay.
So yeah, we'll approve that at the next meeting also. That way it gets it done and gone and.
Well, that's not even necessary. Um, as long as you guys are okay with it going out for public bids, I I don't even really need much more involvement to the council of that.
You can just send it that special?
Yep.
Just sell it.
Yep.
Right.
Just wanna make sure that you know that we'll put it up and then whatever we get in, we'll, we'll alert the council what came in for it. Cause it's not a huge dollar amount.
Do you think a week would be enough?
I'll do it for two. Yep. Try to open in like a fifteen, so if you want two weeks.
North Country first responders.
Um, I just submitted this letter for you guys to review. They, they send this out looking for donations every year. This board has never donated in the past, but I know that they make up of a lot of local people on here besides firefighters too. I don't know if you guys want this in
I was also kind of
the next meeting or not?
Surprised to see that there was no, that, you know, well, not surprised, no dollar amount.
Mm-mm, no, because they send it out to just about everybody. Yeah.
I think we should have this on the next meeting.
Do you wanna consider a donation?
I was just gonna ask, what's our past donations on?
I haven't got anything to this entity.
So I'd be wise to start?
If you feel it suits the needs.
We gave them, uh, what was it, a five thousand dollar COVID relief?
No, that was, that was a Black Duck ambulance.
Let's see ambulance.
Ambulance, okay.
These are the first responders. This is, this is a different
Is that the Midji area?
Association. Yes, North Country.
So Midji.
From Midji.
Yep, Rudy's on this one.
But yet they still coincide with us, don't they?
I've seen the Midji first responder on our calls.
No, you should just Black Duck here.
Yeah, you gotta.
We have our own local.
Which, I'm not saying to change it, I was just curious myself.
Do you wanna consider it or not? Do you wanna consider it or not?
I would say we, I would feel more comfortable doing ours before we go into counties.
Okay.
That's where I'm at.
Okay, so it won't be on your agenda then?
Leave that off.
I think we're gonna have to start saving money here.
Well, you just have a ton of money to give back to us the next one, too.
You're gonna give these shots to like us. All right, Nick, you're up.
Oh, the Kichigami Library.
Yes, sir.
Do you guys want a copy of this?
You gotta see this.
You guys can actually read that.
Yep. Well, I didn't have it on the agenda until this year. Oh, I follow you.
So obviously, the Kichigami Library has excess of monomoney. And as, what's highlighted is over the last seven years, that's what all these libraries have not expended, spent.
Wait a minute, are you saying that Black Duck has this dollar amount for the past seven years?
Well, that's in the Kichigami account right now, but that's what Black Duck could have spent over the last seven years, but they didn't.
Okay, and when you say could have spent, so you know, what can you spend that dollar amount on?
That is still has to be determined with the next Kichigami Board meeting, but.
I'm saying for like improvements or?
That's kind of what we're trying to go for is improvements or whatever the community thinks would fit that for the library. But the Kichigami Board is thinking of letting that amount go back to the individual libraries. If we can come up with a plan for it.
Oh, we can come up with stuff.
Well, we could need pretty tech and foundation.
And I brought that up with that last meeting too. That could be a lot more than just tech. That could be like adding like a meeting room on.
Fixing that deck.
Can it, yeah. Or getting rid of that track deck.
Get rid of that structural.
That's what they're thinking. If we come up, if the community comes up with a plan to spend it, they're gonna allow that funds to go for whatever that community decides.
So what does the, um, board need from us? Quotes, commitments, what we wanna see?
What we wanna see basically, and commitments, what we, what it's gonna be for.
Okay.
They're obviously not just gonna give us money because we say we want seventy thousand dollars worth of books. So, but if we, go ahead, sorry.
I was gonna say, can we get Kelly in for our next meeting and try and discuss this if possible, or are we on like for a work session?
I think what you should do is have Kelly reach out to the other, some of the, you know, surrounding townships. They do contribute to the library. It's not just the city of Black Duck making the decision. I think you should hear from everybody.
Our surroundings, for sure. To see what their needs would be too, whether it be more hotspots, more computers. Whatever benefits our community, that's what this money could go for.
Well, speaking from my own personal, that building needs some money in it.
And that's kind of what I was thinking, my initial plot. Cause, uh, she was saying that they don't have a place for, cause they do communal meetings or whatever, where you have parents meeting their kids, supervised meetings.
Yep.
Be something like an extension to the building plus.
Add-ons to another.
Just to be done with the, they, they've even said that, that nobody's using that deck.
Yeah, they said it's.
It's done for.
Well, they say the kids climb on the rails and get hurt and stuff.
Hop up and.
And jump up on the roof.
They go on the roof.
Which is probably exciting.
So.
Mike, you got a question?
I've got plenty of stuff for you if you wanna know things that the library needs from us, building wise.
You're looking for feedback, right, Nick?
That's, yeah.
Looking for feedback.
Feedback now or later or whenever, that front door is in desperate need of replacement.
I knew that last year.
When I was in there the other day, there's, it's, the, the building shifts so much and the door.
And that, and how much, how much has a city put into that building? Where we could, we shouldn't have to, had to put that money in that building.
Well, we, what'd we spend on the brand new air conditioner?
Air conditioner was forty-five hundred dollars.
Last summer, we put that in.
Seven years ago.
Um, I did something else in there. But the plumbing, I don't remember.
It needs to carpet.
And you guys did temporary repairs on the.
On the, on the front handicap.
On the front handicap.
Yep. The ADA door needs to be updated. That deck needs to be removed.
The rear deck needs to come off.
The roof, the shingles on the roof are, are five years old because we had some hail damage back in like fifteen, so that's fine. The roof should be fine, but it could, it could recite it. There's a lot of things that could be done to the interior and the exterior to help that building continue, but in addition would be wonderful.
In addition to the east.
So it'd be taken into consideration just to get it structurally sound and then go from there to your computers to your hotspots and stuff. Make it sound before.
A little bit easier if we, if we can swing it.
They say they rent the hotspots out nonstop.
Yeah, they're gone.
You can't, it's, you can't even go rent one. You have to be like on a reserve left, so.
They're definitely going on some of those, but there are some things.
Those things are cheap comparatively.
You know, putting first and foremost, getting the handicap ramp taken care of, getting the door taken care of. Those are two real major points to me with that building.
I thought the same way with the, especially in front of the building, just getting rid of the, the wood. Putting in, you know, putting in concrete, something that.
Concrete or even a steel ramp.
You know, it's, it's there for, for good. You don't, and you don't have stuff trying to live underneath it.
Right.
As they have had.
Okay, so I'm just gonna throw this out there for thought. We're working on a, on a very large project that involves the public works. The old law enforcement, the old lumberyard is either more than likely gonna go into somebody else's hands and/or it's gonna get demolished and that's gonna be space for the library. Why not this committee's or this council start thinking about making that library bigger when that building is gone?
He just took my.
You already own the property.
Community center hooked to the library.
Yes.
That would be.
Yep.
There's, there's grant money out there for it.
You got a real possibility there. I was just thinking about that. I think a lot of us are thinking the same.
Same way.
I was just gonna ask, is there any way, Nick, um, that you can find out if Bemidji, or if they're gonna give all this money back to the cities or if a certain city has a higher.
You gotta, I think what they need is a certain plan for the money.
They need a plan, but that's why, hey, I can throw a bigger amount out there and, hey, Bemidji, they don't need that much maintenance, so they'd be willing to.
So there would be a possibility that, you know, Bemidji's got four hundred and eleven thousand, maybe they don't need it, and we can get an extra hundred here.
And they can send it. Yeah.
There's a shot.
And that's kind of what I'm gonna try to push for is, hey, we're a smaller community, we're in dire need of a better library slash community center type thing.
I would even be.
You have the numbers to back it up on how much it's used too.
Yep, the numbers have been up for the last two years.
You go by there in the summer, there's bikes and kids everywhere else. There's not even enough room for it.
Exactly.
I have to judge a library anymore by the amount of books that gets checked out because that's how libraries are funded. From the state, and it's, that is ridiculous. Because the library is so much more than just checking out books.
Especially in a small town like ours.
Yes.
It's lying.
Because it kind of becomes a.
It's a hub. It really is. It's a hub in town. Our shop is right there. I see how easy that is.
It's not even for the kids. I mean, like, uh, Nick was saying, it for meeting up with parents. I mean, I didn't even think of that, actually.
Neither had I until it was brought up at the last library working.
Man, that's a nice safe space.
And supervised, so it's like, works out for everybody.
Yeah.
You spinning them wheels?
Thinking way outside.
I know a neighbor to the north that would love to get rid of that piece of property and now it's three times as big.
Yep. Building directly north of the library, ease and ease sort of right there.
Tim Senior would probably let that thing go.
Outdoor reading center type thing too. Possibilities could be in there.
The possibilities aren't endless and I, I hate saying that we're sitting here daydreaming, but, you know, we, if we could get some solid numbers put together and.
The next meeting I go to.
I don't, I, you tell them that the city will probably.
Will be thrown in as.
We can even toss in the land.
Yeah.
So what kind of a timeline do you need, Nick, from the city? Just a commitment that yes, we would use it to improve the building and make it bigger for the community or improve on what we existingly have?
Improve on what we existingly have.
I think that's a no brainer. Wouldn't you guys say?
Most definitely.
Yeah, you look at some of these numbers out there, yeah, there's no way Bemidji would need to use that much money on there. No, I'm not.
They already have really nice facilities.
See, everybody's got nice facilities when you come here, and I've even said that to the board.
I just wanna say that I'm very disappointed that this is coming out after seven years. Especially since I've been sitting in this role for seven years and have pushed this board to support everything the Kichigami has requested, even though it's above the threshold the state requires them to ask for. By, you know, three to five thousand dollars every year, it seems like. And how that increased to sixty-five grand over seven years, that's, that's sad.
It's something we could have been offering the community more of the past years prior.
Especially with the amount of.
Huge service.
Of levy increases the city has had to do. I mean, no one here, even previous board members that you guys have replaced, has ever blinked an eye at throwing money at the library.
No, we probably saw it shit anymore, like you said.
Yep.
Thinking way outside the box, um, we had a conversation when Deerwood's moving.
Oh, I can't confirm anything on that. I'm sorry. I don't know.
Kinda say, maybe we could get the bank as the new library, way bigger space.
I don't know. I think if you.
But yeah, you're right.
You add the building to the north and then you have space where our old LEC is now to put up an actual community center. And then beyond that, you have our entire lot themselves for parking.
Oh.
Or for events that they wanna put on over there.
Big book, bring the bookmobile in and.
Yep, you've got an area that can be really substantial to the community over there if it's done right.
Yeah, I never thought of that.
And it's relatively quiet over in that part of town, so if there's an event and there's kids out there, you're not worried about, worrying about stuff coming over or something like that, yeah. Well.
There wasn't any fraud, was there, that you have done?
Fraud.
Libraries cooking the books?
Well, number three is payroll expenses were overstated, so.
Exactly, that's what you see there is the money that was supposed to be spent on personnel. Whether it be benefits, whether it be, yeah, more people, more benefits.
And they cut.
And they cut us.
Kelly's hours.
They cut the other people's hours too, prior to Kelly.
Oh, if you look at the bottom of the page, that's what they have. And they wanna keep sixty-five percent of that bottom number just in the bank.
Current, current assets, pre-audit, undesignated funds.
Two point three million dollars.
Two point three million dollars.
There's no reason that should ever happen.
More money than I thought, huh?
Is there any risk of the state taking some of this back?
Nope, cause it's in there, it's in different CD accounts and it's all set aside. That's why they're saying, no matter what, they're thinking they're gonna give it what each number is to the individual entity.
So if we make a good case, we have a very good chance of getting more.
Cause we could probably get money out of Brainerd too.
So one of the things the city can do, um, if the, if the board needs to know is the, and I can double check with the auditors, but I'm pretty sure we can, we can earmark this money. We can put it in a separate project fund once it's turned over by Kichigami, so that they know it's only, it's only being used for that reason. Okay, so it's not gonna get wrapped up in the general fund.
So make sure that when you're making our case that.
Oh, yeah, guaranteed, yeah.
You're doing a hell of a job with us, by the way, Nick.
Yeah. Is there any way that the city could add a, a certain percentage into to help the cause?
We need to grow it.
That might be more of a reason for them to give us a little bit more. Hey, the city's willing to put money in.
Let's look at our reserves after the audit is clean.
Yep.
From twenty.
That way they, they, they know we have a financial statement.
So are we going to somehow put a little group together or something to come up with an actual plan to give them?
I would say let's, hear back from Nick after his next meeting. And then there should be a, a small committee put together of like the local public library board. Maybe a counselor, staff member, himself, something like that, to really.
If he can pull in anybody from, like I said, from the outside. If they wanna, and all I mean, even on.
You know if they will want to be in on this.
Even on the board.
Yeah.
If it helps their.
The little library board that, you know, the, the local one here, you know, they're not all in city limits, but.
Yeah, you got some Hines people, some Summit people, and some Langer.
Yeah.
But they're all committed to supporting the library and captain for years.
Grab a teacher in school or something.
Hey, yeah.
There you go.
I could agree that. Use as a bolster.
That's what I was thinking, the elementary.
Be six kids, I think.
Be six kids.
That's when you hook kids on books is elementary, so.
But Kelly's gotta be in this too.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure she's got a huge wish list. I mean, security alone, we've talked about security for that building in the past. It's got such a horrible blind spot. They don't know if they're okay or not. I mean, that, that would be.
I've heard some bad stuff about their storage back there.
Yeah, that's been a struggle forever.
So, next meeting for them is?
Not next month, but the month after.
April.
April.
Is it April?
Can we wait that long?
You guys could probably start getting some things together now.
We can start getting, yeah, definitely. So I have like a little.
So he has an agenda to bring to them.
It gives us plenty of time to put something together.
So I think next month I have a meet, or I'm gonna go to the library meeting again, all right?
Sure.
Well, what do you guys want to do?
Maybe I, somebody can go run into the school and get some teacher input or.
Now, the, is Amanda Tyson, one of the Tysons is on, is in the elementary.
Who's the school librarian?
Yeah, that'd be the way to go.
Tanya, Tanya Anderson. Okay, oh, she's an Anderson. She's an Anderson, sorry.
No, she, she'd know what the kids are, you know, into or liking, whatever in their library, outside of our own does.
Yep. Mid-March. Part of the next work session and after the next council meeting, something like that.
Yeah, so what do you want?
Pick some people, all put it together and get people together.
For sixteenth or what do you?
That's, I had, that was the next local library meeting on my calendar, but yeah, cause if Nick meets with the library board to get some of their ideas and then you guys have your ideas.
And I take that to Kichigami and.
Come together with one big proposal, you can take that, great to. Cause then you have Kelly's take on what she really.
Cause that meeting, the last two I went on Zoom, but this one I'm gonna go in person. I would love to with good packet.
Yep, great. Okay, so I have Mike, Kelly, Amanda, Nick. Anyone else?
What's wrong with Amanda Tyson?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. Oh, yeah. Tanya, dang it. Sorry, guys. Tanya Anderson.
School librarian, apartment head, consul. Try your local parent, let's go to Kenya. Do it, Benny.
That you?
No, 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 no. My kid doesn't even digital.
You threw it out there.
Yeah.
But that's the library though, the library is digital.
Who do we know, who do we know that is always, I mean.
Maybe another.
Have you volunteered before?
A daycare provider?
Yeah, I'm saying.
Not my wife, but a.
There you go. That would be too bad, like Jenna or Mandy.
Jenna, Mandy.
Kerrigan, she's, I see her take the kids to the library quite often in the summer.
Jenna would be a good one.
Jenna would be.
Because.
Jenna would be a real. She's got some.
Probably be to the north.
Exactly. Jenna Freeman? Yep, yeah.
So, you know, you get these folks together and they. So, you know, you get these folks together and if you want, I'll sit in there too, but.
It was just a brainstorming.
I think we can come up with a book. Well, I've been, I've been going to the meetings for the last two years and then all of a sudden now we get hit with the. Well, I wasn't the representative to Kichigami, but been attending the local library board meetings. This is the first time we've ever had talk of real money to spend.
Well, I think we can thank her.
Actually on paper.
You can thank the new.
The new administrator.
Ooh, they, they have tightened their.
Yep. Stephanie's done a great job. Wonder what, two years?
She had just, yeah, year and a half maybe, yeah.
Uh, do you guys need me to facilitate the committee? I don't need to be there, I'm sure you guys can come up with some great ideas. I don't need to be there.
Figure out when and where, while we need the other.
The secretary, thank you very much.
Appreciate you delegating that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I can.
Yeah.
I can get ahold of Jenna. I'll have Paige get ahold of Jenna and Tanya.
Okay.
Want you to get ahold of Kelly.
Sure. What day you wanna do it and where you wanna do it, say, all you wanna do at the library.
Tell me.
How many, library, do the best way so people can go and see, see it physically.
March, what?
March sixteenth is what I roll on.
Sounds great.
That's a Tuesday night, at night, correct?
Yes.
Uh, whatever, everybody would be like, wow, you just put it on at night, obviously.
I'm done at three, so I, it don't matter.
We got like four, five.
It'll be better for like, if Jenna's got, if Jenna can do it, or daycare will be picked up by four thirty or five. Tanya's probably gotta close the school library.
Put it at six o'clock and just leave all our meetings at six, it just.
Okay, and then if that happens, it's not gonna coincide with the local board meeting. That's how my calendar's repeating, I don't know if that's accurate or not.
Tuesday?
Hmm. Would you know for sure? Kelly would.
It's the blank Wednesday of the week now.
Third.
Third.
That would be the first Tuesday. Third Wednesday or third Tuesday?
If it's Tuesday.
Okay. Well, you know what, it's gonna overlap, there you go, guys.
Well, maybe we'll get everybody in the damn library.
I'll reach out to everybody and send out an email, tell them to invite
Yes.
to the who, what, where and when. Thanks, Nick.
Yeah, it was exciting.
That's just crazy. I wanna know where all that money went.
More.
I mean.
You're sitting there in limbo.
Somebody just.
It's fr- it's so frustrating because we just were like, well, can we put like thirteen hundred dollars in there for some Chromebooks?
Uh, she must've done one heck of an audit, one good audit on their finances.
Man, what do you do when you see a number that big?
Go back over it four times.
Yeah, there's gotta be four extra digits in here.
Yep.
And they discuss all the time, we need this funding, we need that funding, but you already have that funding.
Yep.
All right, Sheldon.
Yes, these Chromebooks, they do need to have viral versions put back on them or because I've been getting a task from Max that he don't.
But I don't send him.
Send me.
I almost got you on that.
And I get other stuff that I don't know what it is.
Okay, I can help you with your Chromebook, it sounds like it just needs to get scrubbed. And that's not a problem, cuz Chromebooks don't have antiviruses on them, they're not, they're not full laptops, so they don't have the ability to have a virus protection on them.
Because you look right there, it says, from him and he don't have a clue.
So you're gonna use.
No, you're gonna look at my, you're gonna look at my Outbox or something.
I played along with it one time, he was like, yeah, can you, can you buy me a couple of five hundred dollar gift cards and I'll pay you back. Yeah, no problem, give me your information.
I got one from Mike.
Yeah, we had that a while ago.
Is there any way we can go on IT department?
You got one.
I got one from you too, but I completely ignored it, cuz I'm like. Yeah, you want me to pick that one? Yeah, a task.
One, I wouldn't say I have a task.
I know, that's why I was like.
That's how it always comes through, I've really moved it from.
What was the email from?
Always a task.
From Gmail.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's not uncommon periodically, cuz I get it here in City Hall too for us to get spammed by something.
Personal email. I had, I got a notice today from Google and I had to change like fifteen passwords because there was a data breach someplace.
Well, that's what I'm worried about with this because it's, there's other files that some things don't wanna be thrown out, you know what I mean?
Well, you're not, your Chromebooks are not attached to the city server, okay?
Oh, I did not know that.
They're only attached to Beltrami County MIS through that Outlook app, or, or Outlook web app and that's it, that's they can see all your incoming and outgoing and that's it. There but nothing that's going to, um, jeopardize, jeopardize the internal, uh, server of the city, of City Hall, it's not even connected.
So.
But it's.
I was just curious about all that.
First of all.
I got one February first.
You gotta be, you gotta be kinda diligent on some of those emails that come through if it doesn't look like it's, um, from a reputable email address and you just see Max Goulet on there and click on it and it's not really his business or personal email, don't open it, cuz what'll end up happening is.
Ever since I've gotten this, I've gotten one, once a month, the same, the first day of the month.
So.
Put it in your spam folder.
Yeah, put it in your spam folder.
If you go to junk, it'll just junk.
And then it'll, and then it'll quarantine it, it won't happen again.
I just, to me, I thought it'd be a kind of a big concern, you know, with other files floating around. Granted, it's public knowledge.
Sure.
But yet there's some in other files, say with Beltrami County or whatever, that people can hack into.
And they can't, not through those Chromebooks. No, cuz they're, everything in there is cloud based and it's only either on iCompass where you get your packets or your Outlook web app.
I just thought I'd bring it up is, you know, you don't, you don't know.
Now we know.
And worst case scenario, what we can do, Sheldon, is we can reformat your Chromebook back to factory specs and then I can reinitialize it.
I'll just legal it.
I won't do it anyway, but you can bring it back.
Well, I can pick it up next week, right?
You, you know the easy way to get it something fixed?
No.
Did you finish your league Minnesota city stuff?
I haven't started it.
Okay. Anybody else? You guys are next week or a week after?
No, I, um, I actually called them, I figured out I'd get into it now. So, um, Ashley said that I could go ahead and do it and on a Saturday.
See?
Watch the whole thing, do the whole thing on one whole day.
Yep. I knew there was a way around it.
Because I'm, I'm still in the system, but I had.
Soon as you do the first one, then you.
There's a dot, it's S, Sheldon dot.
Gotcha.
That's where it's kinda was iffy on doing that, they removed the dot, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
When should we schedule a cleanup of our laptops, Chromebooks?
I've got two years of saved email on here.
I'm, I'm there with you. I mean, I haven't had an issue with mine yet, so that's why I was just curious.
I mean, it can periodically get scrubbed, right back to factory specs and then re, you know, puts your, um, your Gmails and your usernames back on it. I can't state for certain if your Outlook web app is gonna go right back to the way it used to be.
Well, I haven't had an issue with that anywhere, so.
Okay.
Change your password.
No, it's not even that, something about, uh, my credentials. I have to click on unsecured and something or another.
And every now and then that'll happen because of Chrome. So, if you can try to keep Chrome updated, that'll help. Yep, just make sure you're letting the Chromebook do its updates when it needs to. Like, I'm not saying that all the updates are gonna solve all your problems because, you know, if your iPhone or your Android phone has upgrades, it's trying to fix the bugs from other things that have been updated and that's just, it, it constantly forgets, it's constant.
It's from Max's tasks.
Max's tasks.
I just wanted to make a comment, um, Max, your question this morning, when you were stopped in at the bar for lunch. The sign will be fixed tomorrow.
The sign.
The sign.
On the southeast one facing.
Oh, no.
Charlie, it had a, it has a blank spot. So Shonda contacted the person that did their signs in to go through, um, in December and he got back to her on the seventeenth of December. And the parts were in limbo somehow, somewhere, they got misshipped somehow. So, what?
December?
It will be, he didn't call, Drew called, found it back and the sign will be fixed tomorrow. Nothing, he's doing it when it's warmer. And that too, I think.
It's supposed to snow and rain tomorrow.
Yeah.
Shut your mouth. Hey, I plowed snow for a living.
When you got here, they tried that same thing.
And I agreed with you at first.
Yeah, at first. You're just not agreeable, guy.
So I just wanted to give you.
Will you have a most you do a turn? No, I've got that one.
Oh, no. What do you got, Mike?
You ready? I, and, and I know it's not gonna be popular. I have a thing I phone.
Nice and loud for the cameras.
That's fine, everybody can hear me. Um, I recently came across a thing from, through WITSET uh, in regards to possible funding for parks. You know, we've talked about doing a lot of updates, Pine Tree Park and things like that. I have a, a, a thought in my head and I wanna talk to you guys before I go any further with figuring things out. Uh, just like a rant?
No, just hang on.
Yeah, you just wait, I'm getting there before we even get to the ground. Um, for doing things like walking trails, camping, things of that nature. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, basically, long story short, I wanna shut the golf course down.
You got my vote.
I, I know it sounds odd, but we all know that the golf course is hemorrhaging money every year. And I've got a way, I believe, and I'd have to look further into it to give you real good, solid numbers, but a way that I'm thinking we can make a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year better. By turning a portion of the golf course into an RV park.
Okay.
If you guys have been around and seen the way the RV parks are going right now, they're stacking them on top of each other where they're ten to fifteen feet apart and they're charging them three thousand dollars.
You can have, can't even find a place.
You talked about.
Seasonal.
Seasonal RVs, yep.
Tom, Tom Rock has seventy-five.
But then you, we'd have to do upgrades to the park for them to, a bigger, enjoyable walk-in pass and scenery and.
There, there would be some things that we would have to do, just about everything my department can do.
How much of the?
Enough.
How, how, how much of the golf course we talking, like fifty percent, thirty percent?
Right now, I'm literally looking at hole three and hole four.
Okay.
Which is, you know, two, two out of nine holes.
So we could still reamp the golf course for like the driving range or?
You can still have a driving range, we could maybe do some other things. I know that obviously, we all know that we just put a bunch of money into a car shed down there.
You could putt 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 too.
You're getting there, you're getting there. We can reuse the building that's down there now. The clubhouse, you know, we've all talked about the possibility of, you know, the restaurant, small bar type of thing. I don't think there's any way, reason to shy away from that, I would actually embrace that and start looking at doing some league stuff down there. Volleyball, volleyball, what have you, different nights of the week to bring more business in. I really truly think there's a potential for us to make a lot of money out there. And that's just gonna help everybody in town. We can start, you know, having some better roads and some things of that nature versus losing money constantly. But before I go any further and before I waste my time, you know, really digging into how much it's gonna cost, how much we can get back and all that, I wanna know if you guys are interested in that or if I should just let it die.
It's impossible to move those two holes to a different spot.
No.
No. No. Landlocked.
You're landlocked. If that were the case, we would've had a driving range or an eighteen hole golf course by now.
Well, you're right.
I personally would like to see the North Half Pine Tree Park to become seasonal first. Not saying against your idea, before we expand.
The problem with that is that a lot of the Northern Half Pine Tree Park is really low. It's essentially a swamp.
Oh, I didn't mean that, I meant the existing
Oh.
twelve, fourteen sites on the north loop.
Five player now?
Yes.
Add septic to them and make them.
So.
It would be septic, it'd be, is everything on running?
They have water.
Water electric right now.
Water and electric, but they don't have sewer. Um, up there, and I agree with you, to get that moving along, however, in that area, to really do it the right way, I think that we need to start over, essentially up there. You're kinda limited by the landscaping there. So we would actually, in that area, drop a couple of camp sites to do it properly up there. But that would essentially go hand in hand if we were to move forward with this project of doing the two essentially at the same time.
Especially with the expansion of the beach.
Well, we've got the new beach there now, got the parking lot, we've talked about doing, um, you know, some boat dock, fishing pier stuff. There's really, right now, there's a ton of potentials that's been just left on the table out there. To keep a golf course that truly, honestly, I don't think there are very many residents of town that actually use it.
No, I, last year is the only year I went out and golfed.
And what'd you think of it?
Like you've always thought of it.
Nine hole, seven course?
But on the opposite side, last year we did have our best year ever. But you are correct.
It was still last one.
For many, 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 many years.
If you had a seven hole instead of a nine hole and you have it full of residents or full of people staying right there, I think you probably have say you have twenty play bases there, you've probably got twenty more, uh, members.
I think even if you had three holes and a driving range.
You're still gonna have people paying that are the residents for that same golfing experience and the people that use it will probably still hold three holes.
That mean if you, if you drop it down to like a three or something along those lines, also with the, the added seasonal lots, we can get rid of those golf carts. We can sell those to the seasonal lot people in a heartbeat and then we don't have to worry about the maintenance on those.
On the lawn or.
And as far as upkeep goes, you know, with the seasonal lots, you've got two ways. They can take care of it or they can pay us to take care of their lot.
So they can have us pay it and then set a, much like a
A fee.
A development.
Yep.
You have.
Yep.
You have a fee on there. That way you get it what you want and use such a rules.
Mike, I talked about down by the clubhouse, you have, if you get the pond to come in on different league nights and you have volleyball, sandy out there.
That'd be.
That's huge. And you can serve right through that bottom window, people won't have to come in with sandy feet and you'd have would do well. That's huge, and you can serve right through that bottom window, people won't have to come in with sandy feet, and you'd have, would do well doing things like that.
True, you've got the boat access right there, and you've got.
Even if it's not just volleyball, that.
Bocce ball.
Cornhole tournaments and stuff like that, people would love to do that.
Yeah. Cornhole, sand volleyball, bocce ball, horseshoes, things like that, where you do one Monday night, one Tuesday night, you get different groups of people.
So it's always busy.
You're always busy.
Yep.
Night of the week, every night.
And they do have a liquor license out there, don't they, from the city?
But if we could do something with.
Need the food license to get higher water.
That's gone.
Right.
And what we said that was ten thousand dollars for the kitchen?
You know, we, I don't know, we got that, it was solid number chase.
And that's, you know, that's constantly down the road, not everything has to happen at once, again, this is just me wanting to know if I should really put some time into looking at what my cost would be, on materials, doing water and sewer, there's already a well at the golf course. It's no different than the well we use at Pine Tree Park.
I might, getting rid of half that irrigation would save a lot of money too, that's a money pit for the irrigation.
Some of that goes, we would have to probably put in a lift station to get waste over to the ponds, luckily, the ponds are pretty close.
And the sewer line goes real.
But in the long run, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to look into it, and get some figures of facts, and roll from there on it.
Yeah, I'm the same way, Mike, I mean, if we can give money, reties as much as we're losing, well, back into the city.
That's what I'm looking at, you know, like I said, I, conservatively, I'm thinking, when I say a hundred and fifty thousand, I'm thinking fifty spots at three grand apiece. You know, they might be a little more, they might be a little less, might be more spots, it might be less, depending on, you know, I, I think a lot of it, what a lot of people are missing with these places is their, their sites that they're getting are really small, from other places. Where we've got the ability to give them a little bit larger site.
So they're right next to each other.
Right, you know, plant some little trees, do some things, so everyone kinda has their own, and then you're able to charge a premium.
Every site that I've ever used, or that I've been using the last few years, you're like standing within ten feet or you're under an average.
Your, your fire pits here, their campers there.
And the body's almost touching right over their fire.
Exactly, so you give them a little bit of space, and, you know, it might take a year or two years to, you know, cover our initial costs in there, but then again, if we get the grants or however it works, you know, moving forward, you start thinking about bringing in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, kind of a no-brainer to me.
Because the upkeep and the staffing.
No, it has just been on.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're operating, your maintenance, your annual maintenance is a lot less.
Oh, yeah, our, 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 our maintenance costs would go down drastically out there, compared to what we're putting out now.
Correct.
Could it potentially create or keep the number of jobs that we have now, that we're paying people to do?
But you lose on it, wouldn't you?
You know, I, I.
It depends on what you do year round.
What do we have out there for actual full-time?
Equivalents.
Full-time, part-time, I guess is what we should call it.
You probably have two full-time equivalents, and maybe, yeah.
A lot of those places have groundskeepers, and if you're gonna charge good money, keep it for sale, I mean, you could still keep employees, and I, I do the same thing, just keep it really nice, and if they need something, it gets done.
Oh, yeah, and especially like Mike said, we might need a cook, I mean, we might need a, a referee for the league night, or whatever.
There, there could be things like that, where, you know, we have the part timers, um, as far as, again, full-time, part-time, I don't know, like, wanna, seasonal full-times, I guess we'll call them.
Right.
Right now, you have Jim and Pam, pretty much are your two seasonal full-times.
Yep.
I see no reason why they, their positions couldn't be retained.
Right.
You know, with what's out there.
Well, I'll tell you what, you just made the golf world a whole lot more interesting.
Sure I did. I'm sure I'll have a lot of people that are real happy with me, however, I think I'll have more that are happy with me when we start generating revenue than stop.
Yes, sir.
You got my go-ahead with it, Mike.
Yeah, for sure.
And all that.
Good.
I will start looking into it more than.
Numbers, beggars, buyers.
WITSET's got a program, um. Yeah, I'll look, I'll dig into that further, too, I just, I saw it come across, and I've been thinking about this, and looking at things out there, that, well, if I don't bring it up, it's never gonna happen, so.
You see that, in, in the long run, too, with the new beach and the dock, and it's all been established, and you might also get people to use it.
The way everybody's been using it.
Every, well, to get it.
It's just, it's gonna bring a lot to our community, I think, you know, not, not even so much just the city revenue, but, I mean, you start bringing that many people to town every weekend, or all week long, or whatever, in the summer. All our local business is gonna benefit from it.
Yes, you're, you're, you're right, they're shopping.
And Jaycee have been wanting to raise.
More, more controls. I just hope this, uh, doesn't have the negative effect on the resorts.
I, you know, I don't think that it will, I think they're all at capacity as it is, with really no room to go any further, I don't think we're stepping on anyone's toes, or, or taking business away, you know, that, that resort cabin business versus, you know, the.
Versus a seasonal business.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda two different animals there, so I, I think we'd be okay.
And, and honestly, there are a couple of resorts around Blackwick that aren't even being used to capacity now, but that's due in part to the ownership, where there are others that are trying to expand as much as they possibly can, because they see the revenue stream in it.
I just know that Blackwick does have an RV park, I just don't want them to say, oh, hey, this is new and shiny, let's go over there and try this out, while they lose their money. I mean, it's part of business.
I think there's one enough to go around.
I, I think there isn't, that other one is on, literally on the lake, I don't think we're gonna see the.
Anything from Tomahawk. And they have new owners too.
Yeah, so, maybe that'd work, but yeah. And in, and in that aspect of things, coming back to something you guys had talked about earlier, it kinda makes a an easier path to continue out that road of the city. Long term.
There's your annexation.
Right.
Yeah. Hey, well, I'll start looking into it, I have no idea what a lot of stuff for you guys to give next.
Well, it's just.
Well, since we're talking about great ideas, can I share mine?
Bring it on. Please, I'm, I'm sure we have an open spot on the agenda.
Because you guys have nothing else to do that you guys approved.
Yeah, look at that, Kristen, here at the bottom, you got a, one spot for you, right there. Right above the tournament.
Can I look into bringing a W D register in here? No, I think I'd probably hire Alfred.
Yes, hundred percent yes. I've been saying that for.
I know, but I haven't talked to everybody on the board about it.
Yeah, I know, but I've been saying it. I hate driving thirty miles to get my tabs.
I don't have any idea what it would entail, cost or anything, but I figured I might as well look.
Well, you could check the miss spot.
There is a thing.
I mean, they're gonna close at some point.
Right, but I mean, as a, as a foundation to start, to, to find out.
Um, there's a distance thing on that.
I think it's over thirty miles.
Yeah, I think it's gotta be thirty miles from the next, and we're not thirty from Pemidgen, not thirty from Missport. That would be the.
Fourteen, twenty-four. Well, maybe we can entice Missport to shut down and kick them, oh, shoot, still can't.
And they're in another county too. I don't know.
Yeah, we can look into it, it sure doesn't hurt.
Definitely doesn't. It'd make a lot easier on a lot of people.
Huh? I don't know, you, no, well, I'm not. What?
I would need some changes, yeah, more than what we just facelifted, but yeah, I, I wanna see if it's even a feasibility thing first. I don't think you'd need more than, um, a workstation.
That's about it, you can just put.
You shouldn't need more than another workstation.
No.
A computer.
Order of six hundred, six feet.
Yep.
And some license plates and some tabs.
And, and I'm saying this wouldn't be, wouldn't even have to be a seven, a five, five day a week thing, it could be a two or three day.
Two or three day a week thing, that's all you.
With, like, noon to four, and that's it, that would still make.
Become busy, that's when you start.
That would still be a good change.
Were you gonna surprise us with Jason?
Got something.
Nope, I'm saying.
Sporals are moving.
Well, I mean, this is how ideas get.
No, that's, uh, this is what the work sessions are for, isn't it?
Yeah.
Where you're supposed to bring it up.
Can I officially get motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Mike?